Good evening and welcome to the April 26, 2016 school committee meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. We'd like to thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Media, channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking to spur volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at 413-203-1360. Before we proceed with the meeting tonight, Superintendent Valensby has some very sad news to share with all of us.
Yes, I do have sad news to share this evening. Polly Parker, our Director of Curriculum, passed away this morning after a long battle of cancer. She was an amazing person and a gifted educator, and she will be missed by all of us who knew her as a colleague and a friend. Thank you. And now I have some other announcements. The next regular school committee meetings are May 10th, June 14th, and June 28th, 2016. The cultural festival at Pepin School is on April 29th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's a half day of school on Friday, May 6th, due to teacher professional development. There is no school on Monday, May 30th, due to Memorial Day. The last day of school is currently scheduled for Tuesday, June 21st, 2016. There's a new session of strengthening families for middle school students and their caregivers beginning today, April 26th, and runs through June 4th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with optional dinner at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any correspondence today, do we?
No, we don't.
No correspondence, and we don't have any gifts to report.
Okay.
At this time in our meeting, we open up the floor to anyone who might want to come and speak to us at our public speak time. It doesn't look as though anyone's here to do that this evening. So we will move on to a report from Ms. Savaro and Mr. McGuire, our guidance counselors at the high school, on two different programs, one called Naviance and one called Career Cruising.
And actually, Mr. Burke, our principal, is going to give the presentation, and he's going to be assisted by our two guidance counselors.
So, tonight we're going to give you a presentation on Naviance, Career Cruising, K-12 for high school. And what we're also including and talking about is Career Cruising Spring Board, which we currently do have at the high school. I know we gave the school committee, I believe you have a spreadsheet that has a comparison of what's included in Naviance. Was that him? Yes, correct. So there's a spreadsheet that compares Naviance to Career Cruising K-12, and then Spring Board, like I said, which is currently actually being utilized in the high school. That gives you a detailed overlook. We've focused into a few things that we think are important here. One of the main comparison difference between Naviance and Career Cruising is Naviance does work with the Common App. Now, the Common App is something that we do utilize currently in the high school. The Common App works with submitting applications, recommendation transcripts, and mid-year reports. So, Naviance works with the Common App, so once you actually have Naviance, you don't actually need to utilize the Common App. Naviance works, I would guess, in unison with it. Versus Career Cruising, if we go with Career Cruising K-12, we would still utilize the Common App, and we can still use it. We can still submit applications, we can still submit recommendations and transcripts. It just, it doesn't work seamlessly with it, so it would be two separate applications. What Career Cruising does offer that Naviance doesn't offer is access to portfolios even after they leave graduation, when they leave the school, which is a good thing. So, there's, portfolios are things that students can actually upload through their time at high school and keep in Career Cruising. And, once they're done, they can pull from that portfolio. Naviance does not allow for that. Career Cruising also has a partnership with Power School, which is the database that we currently use, which makes it a little bit more seamless as far as, once we do get Career Cruising, all that data is easily rolled in as far as student information into the program, what we allow Career Cruising to actually utilize. So that is a benefit. Naviance does not have a working relationship with Power School. The other main difference is Career Cruising has a program Inspire, which allows students to connect with local employers. So that's, you know, does access a certain amount of our students that would allow them to access local employers as far as jobs and other things. So, those are the basic comparisons that we've brought out. I don't know if you've had time to review the spreadsheet and have any questions as far as what you see as comparisons or differences or what we've put out. One of the things we're looking at too is the training. Spring Board, which our faculty already knows how to use, is five hours of training versus Career Cruising is K-12, is a 10-hour training. Naviance is more intensive, it's 18 hours of training. Also, keep in mind that there's, even within Career Cruising K-12 and Naviance, there's different parts of the program you can use, so this training time could change depending on what parts of the program you decide to utilize. For the programs, we've decided in the price quotes, these were the hours of training that we were giving. This is the cost comparison. Career Cruising, the Spring Board, is something that, yes, we've been currently been paying for, but in actuality, we've had a grant for the past six years. So even, it hasn't actually been coming out of our pocket, which has been a nice thing, but that grant is now up. So, we do need to actually buy Career Cruising. So at minimum, we will have Career Cruising at the school next year. Career Cruising K-12 is an initial $2,750 investment, and that is because it includes the training, and then it's $2,300 every year after that. Naviance is a more expensive program. The initial year one cost is $7,790. That includes the cost of the program, which is a pure per-student program, and another cost involved in it, plus materials that get handed out to parents, plus the training, the initial training cost, which is all that 18 hours of training. All that adds up to that $7,000 figure. And if you look over just a three-year total, Career Cruising is definitely a more affordable program. After three years, you're up over $16,000 in Naviance. Any questions on the cost comparison? So, this is kind of, as we've gone through it, and we've brought this, we brought this to team leaders yesterday, and we discussed it with team leaders, we've had conversations with guidance counselors and administration, the superintendent has been involved. We have had hour-long meetings with representatives from Naviance and Career Cruising. And this is the implementation that we're kind of proposing to do, is to purchase the Career Cruising K-12 for the high school for the next school year. Under the premise that if we go for it now, it's kind of going to be a partial utilization. We still have to figure out how to fully implement this program into our high school. So it would still be available to students, it would still be available to teachers, but we still have to learn aspects of the training, learn aspects of the program. We have to use the training to figure out what parts we can integrate and how we can integrate it into our high school. There are certain parts that right away, they can be used as far as students using it to help get into colleges, look at colleges. There are definitely some things that can start off right away, but in order to roll out the program, we have to understand the program. So, that takes time. There's also a curriculum that comes with Career Cruising. And, we've already had some conversations with our staff about it and with our leadership team. The math literacy class, there's curriculum that goes with that, which we like to implement. We've talked with our English department as far as resume writing, technical writing, and definitely, once we get up into the 11th and 12th grade, that's something that I think we don't have right now at the high school. And I think this is something, and the curriculum is in Career Cruising, and we can bring it to our students, which I think would be a great benefit to them. And then obviously, working with them and getting scholarships and financial aids, and some of that can get brought into the, we have a personal finance class and some other classes that we can roll that into. So we really want to figure out, once we get this program, if we're paying for it, how to best utilize it. And part of that is rolling it into our curriculum, so that the students aren't just getting it in one class, but they're getting it across multiple curriculums. And then hopefully, once we do that, and as I said, the college planning would be available for year one. I believe that's pretty easy to roll out to the students. And our staff is already familiar with the Career Cruising base through Spring Board, so I don't think that's going to be too difficult. And then hopefully, once we go through this on the first year, that the second year, we can hopefully get to full utilization. Hopefully it'll be a full utilization, but at least close to it. And that's, that's pretty much where we're at. Once again, we've, you know, we've done a good amount of research, we've spent some time with reps from both programs, and Naviance is definitely a great program. I just don't think the affordability is there for our high school right now. Any comments, questions, concerns?
I have a question for you. So, we've been using Career Cruising the last few years, correct? On some level?
Spring Board, which is a lower level of Career Cruising. Yeah, it focuses more on, we utilize it more in the ninth grade classes. Chris or Chad could probably talk on how we utilize that more, because they actually bring it into the classes.
Yeah, I'm just curious to understand, like, what's been hap, the comparison of what's been happening now versus what, if we go forward with that program for next year, what's the difference between what we've been doing now and what we would be doing in year one?
Well, the product is different. I'm not so sure if we'd be doing anything different, but the product itself is different. So, we have a ninth grade curriculum where we go into that wellness class, and the students complete a host of inventories that then allow us to work with them to build their four-year plan. That stays the same, except with the upgraded version, there's more inventories that a student would be completing about themselves. So that'll point them in more accurate directions for potential careers that might be of interest to them, and then the four-year high school plan that will reach that, and then also, which college degrees exist and what the employability percentages might be for salaries and such. So it just, it'll give us more accurate information for both us and for the student.
And would the program be incorporated into the current class that's called College and Career Readiness? Would there be a component to that class that involves?
And that's part of what we're looking at curriculum-wise, because when we go through it, they've gone through a certain curriculum. We don't, until we get it, we're not sure what all the curriculum is and how to implement it. So, that's partly why I'm saying, when we get the program initially, there's some learning on our end. We have to go through the training, figure out what's there, and then work it within our curriculum. We know that there is a math literacy program that we can implement within the math lit, but we don't know how we're going to implement it into it. We haven't had access to the curriculum yet, because we don't have the program.
And, Mr. Burke, am I remembering correctly, and the guidance counselors can help me, I was there when we did webinars on both programs. Career Cruising did allow students to put in, you know, the programs they were interested in, and it would help give them a list of possible colleges and universities that would have those programs. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct, yeah, they can do college searches through there. And that's the big difference between what we have, that's one of the big differences between what we have now versus going to the K-12, is the college searches and is the college help. I don't think the Spring Board program really has too much to offer to help our students in looking at colleges where the K-12, that's what it's more based on. It helps students as far as looking at colleges, figuring out what colleges work for them. It kind of continues on from the Spring Board, and what they learned in ninth grade, and what their pathway should be, and kind of helps them figure out where to go after high school.
The mayor had a question, I have a question, but you can.
Okay.
So, there's three different programs. So you're talking about the Spring Board. Career Cruising is very different than that, as is Naviance.
Correct.
And it's, you know, you went through, thank you for your presentation, but you went through a lot of the different changes and the different prices, but it sounds like you did a lot of research on what product you would really like, what you felt was most beneficial, you know, in the guidance department.
In a perfect world, right, if we had unlimited budget, absolutely Naviance is the way to go. There's no doubt about it. But it's not a perfect world, and it's, you know, it just isn't. So, what Career Cruising can offer us at that fuller model is really strong for the students. You know, it's still going to duplicate some of the work that we do, because we'll still be using two platforms, the one we're using right now, which is Common App, and then we'll be using this one. But the students can still submit their materials electronically, which right now, they can't, unless they're using Common App, and there's thousands of colleges that don't. So that's a lot of manual work on our part. But, yeah, Naviance does allow for that seamless operation between the Common App and Naviance. We just don't know how seamless it would be with Power School, which is our, you know, it's our database program at the high school.
So, my question was, and I was trying to get caught up, I apologize, I've been on the road since we received this, and I'm operating from a place of ignorance. The status of submitted applications item, and I'm going all the way back to the beginning, President Burke, it, am I understanding that you, it's only via the Common App? I'm looking at the top of the fourth page of this spreadsheet, I like the fifth page, where it says, "Status of submitted applications," we have a yes, but "Status of submitted applications via the Common App." What's the distinction there? Why is the first one yes and the second one no? And I'm not sure that it matters a lot, but since there's a difference, I just want to be sure.
There's a lot of them like that.
Right, and this was one.
With the Common App.
Right.
So, the main difference, the main difference in that is Career Cruising doesn't work with the Common App. So, even if we go with Career Cruising K-12, it doesn't have that connection with the Common App. We would use the Common App, but we would use it separate.
Separately.
From Career Cruising. So it would be utilizing two programs. But we could still submit the applications, but most of that work comes on the guidance side. They're the ones that end up with more work on that.
So, with the Career Cruising, Chris and Chad, you have access to know whether a student has completed all of the steps, right? Career Cruising will still provide you with that information?
The current, the current Career Cruising product that we have does not.
Right, but the one you're recommending.
The one that we're recommending will.
Will, right.
On everything except the Common App.
Right.
Yes, yeah, so we'd still be looking in two different, yeah.
And so, and that's also, I think this is what the mayor was referring to when we looked at the section on the submission of recommendations. So that's another example, and that's on the first page, where again, we have a, the electronic submission of the letters of recommendation is yes, and then via Common App is no. And I'm just, again, I'm.
Same, same thing, Career Cruising, Career Cruising just doesn't work with the Common App.
That's all right, I think the most simplistic way to look at it is that Naviance is one-stop shopping. It's all-inclusive. Are free and are available, but they don't connect directly to Career Cruising, so.
Right.
So they still have access to them, they would still use them, but they're not tied directly to Career Cruising, whereas with Naviance, it's all-inclusive.
Is there some advantage with the Naviance system with those college applications that aren't part of the Common App? Is there any advantage for the non-Common App applications?
Advantage within acceptance or advantage in programming?
Just for applying?
Well, it would eliminate paper mailing of things. So, it would all be electronic versus us packaging a student's transcript and mailing it, packaging a student's letters of recommendation, mailing it. The student, I would say probably 99% of the colleges at this point are online, so the student application is still being done online for each of those schools. It's just a little bit more work.
On the background materials, supporting materials.
Submission of the transcript, letters of recommendation, things like that, true.
So, my question then, coming off of that, I bring you musical chairs, it always works this way. The cost analysis that you've done is really, and I want to say this in the right way, I'm thinking of this in terms of like, opportunity cost with economics, I teach economics. There's an opportunity cost to using Career Cruising that's not reflected in the cost analysis up there, which is that all the things that you two do by hand takes time away from other things that you would otherwise be able to do if we were using Naviance, correct? That what we're looking at is the dollar cost of each program, but the dollar cost of the one-stop shopping with Naviance means that you're free to do the things that no computer program can do, which is to spend more time in the actual counseling role with the students.
I, you're 100% correct, but I also have to live in my reality of I have a set budget of funds which I can pull from.
Right.
So I have to take that in consideration also.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
But you're 100% correct, yes.
I'm not disagreeing at all with the basis of the recommendation, I just, and the comment that I'm going to make is not for the work that you're doing and the proposal that you're presenting. You know, I just spent the weekend with 50 high school teachers from across the country, overwhelming majority of which are in the public school system, and talking about how vital the work that you three are describing, how vital this function is in our system, and how budget realities crash into that all the time. It's the world everywhere, and it's unfortunate. I just want to be sure that, before I speak to the committee as a whole, when you guys are done, that I understand the pieces of how, you know, there are consequences to the choice that you make. And ultimately, this is up to the superintendent, I believe, and to you, Kevin, and to the professional staff at the high school. But in our role as advocates on behalf of the kids in this town, to hear in a perfect world, that's the world I want us to get as close as possible to living in. And I do, and I'm doing the math in the back of my head about the difference, we're talking on a, over three years, is, I took the numbers down quickly, is $9,000 roughly, over three years, right, the slide? Or $3,000 a year, or one school choice student per year? That's not, that's not for you, that, right, that's for everybody else up here. But I want people who are out there thinking, what difference does school choice or charter schooling mean to us as a district? And here's another example of what one student means in terms of the services that our hard-working staff believes we're able to offer. Right, because when you talk about money, people are like, well, what's money? What's four, $5,000 in a year? What is that? Okay, here it is. Here's one example, and we might not choose to spend it on this, even if we had it. But one of the things that we could spend it on, if we had it, is what I understand, to be closer to the perfect world that would free our, great, you know, the great part of East Hampton schools, I think, is what our people and the connection our people make with the children that they serve. And I'm in favor of hunting down, in any way we can, the resources that allow them to spend more time doing something that no computer program can do, which is to talk to this student about their individual circumstances and what is best for them. And it's one of the reasons that I encourage, and I very much appreciate you doing all of this research, and I'm sorry that the time to do the research may have taken you away from that, but at least now we've got it, and we can make a better informed, you can make a better informed decision, and we can understand and appreciate it. Thank you.
Personally, my hope too, as just speaking personally, that a decision on this wouldn't be a matter of having to cut things from your regular budget in order to afford one versus the other, but that we would look to try to add that to your budget, so that, you know, it would be more efficient and effective and helpful for everyone going forward, and not be a trade-off situation, but be an add to what we need at the high school for optimum functioning. So I just wanted to throw that out. That was my personal goal, for that to be the case, if you deemed that it was the way you wanted to go.
And, I know, I just want to make sure it's clear that even bringing the Career Cruising K-12 is going to bring.
Cost.
A lot of, a lot of good things to our school, to our students, and aid our guidance department too. So, you know, even though it's a less expensive program, and there are some things which it does not work with the Common App, which is really the only difference between the two programs that we could find, it brings everything else, it brings the college searches, it brings the scholarship searches, it does everything that we want, which we can integrate within to our school and help our students, which I think is the main goal. And to speak to what you were saying, Peter, it does help our guidance department, and it will be, it will save them time to give them time to directly work with students, which is what we want them to be doing.
If I could just add, I think one of the things that we all got really excited about when the Career Cruising rep was making her presentation, was the ability to add into our database all of our scholarships, because we don't have that right now. Students come in and they dig through a file, and that takes a lot of time. Naviance doesn't have that, and they don't have the link to our local employers, which Career Cruising does. So that we got really excited about. You know, we were excited about the one-stop shopping for the college portion of the application process, but to know that they could use Career Cruising to still electronically submit to the non-Common App schools, that's exciting in and of itself. So, yeah, that was really exciting.
What does that link to the local employers look like? How are they connected?
So we only know what the rep showed us online, and it was literally just one page.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, again, that would be part of the training. If we were to go to this product, at some point, we'd have to work in, you know, A, who's responsible for doing that, but second, how do we make that connection, load that database in, yeah.
There's a lot of aspects to this program, and even a one-hour presentation, even though it leaves you shy of really understanding the whole program.
I was interested in this portfolio that students can access even after graduation. What would be contained in those portfolios, and how many years after graduation is that accessible?
The portfolio is basically a way for students to actually upload work that they've done, and hold whether it's resumes or anything else, but upload it. So, actually, one of the things that were, that was being looked at in the prior Nias visit was using the portfolio in Nias. So, there's multiple different ways that you can actually utilize the portfolio, but it's literally a way to just take work that you have digitally, or whether you've taken photos of it, and upload it into a file, which you can access at any point in time, whether it's showing artwork that you've done in the past, whether it's a computer program you wrote. I mean, it could be, you know, various things, whether it's a paper you wrote at one point in time, and it's there to save that you can show to a prospective employer, or show if you're looking to change colleges, so.
Okay, great. It's really student work as opposed to transcripts or letters of rec, sort of.
Right, because all that would be in, all that would be in there anyway, if they can access it, I believe.
Okay, great, thank you.
And how long would that be available to the student or graduate?
My understanding was we control that end of it. Yeah, so we wanted to have it out two years, three years, four years. That would just be on the high school side to make that decision.
It sounds like it's a step, a big step in the, in the, in a direction that will help your office do more good work. And I think that's wonderful.
That's kind of the way we feel, too. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here.
Okay, moving on to our subcommittee reports. Our finance subcommittee has not met since our last meeting, but the policy review subcommittee has, I believe.
Yes.
Do you have Sarah, our chair?
Yes, I am now.
Do you have anything to report?
Um, yeah, so I need some help with just the process here. Like, do I just report, like, report on what we talked about? We have like a specific thing that we're bringing forward, right? Peter, you're going to have to help me with this.
Right, yeah, I think that traditionally, the report on the policies that we examined, and then any matters for action, and we have, we have both.
Yeah, so we talked about, we talked a little bit about the bus transportation, the transportation policy. We didn't really have a whole lot of time to get into it, and a lot of it. We didn't really have a whole lot of time to get into it and a lot of it was just kind of giving me and Marissa, um, who are new to the committee, some background on the issue. So we're gonna take that up again at another, another point. Um, and we talked about, um, the chain of command policy on the school committee. Um, and there's, I don't have to bring that, those changes up here right now.
Right, we're working on a, on redrafting, um, an update. Our, our chain of command policy is based on, in, from nineteen ninety-three in both some of the language and some of the changes in the way the, the city is now governed. We require that we make some mechanical changes at a minimum.
So you'll hear.
We were a town then.
We were. There's references to the April and after the town meeting and so.
You'll hear all sorts of exciting grammatical updates.
Yes.
In a few weeks. Um, so then the, uh, the last item, which is what we're bringing forward tonight, is a change to the emergency plans. And basically, I think you guys have all received a copy of this. Is that true? Cool. Cause I have an extra one here somehow. And basically, the only thing that's changed in the emergency plans is there's a line after item seven that says that the superintendent shall annually review the response sequence with local police and fire officials. Plans shall be submitted to local police and fire officials and to the DESE at least every three years by September first or when changes occur, which has already been happening, so it's not a huge change. So I have to bring a motion, right, to approve that?
Motion for a first reading.
Yeah, motion for a first reading, which I just did, but I'll bring the motion anyway.
I'll second it.
All right. Um, so I will now read it again. I'm not gonna read the entire emergency plans, cause then, uh, we'd all fall asleep. But, so after item seven, the changes, uh, the change is the addition. Uh, the superintendent shall annually review the response sequence with local police and fire officials. Plans shall be submitted to local police and fire officials and the DESI at least every three years by September first or when changes occur. And that's, uh, that's it. So.
Okay, so.
What else do I have to do?
We have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of the revised emergency plans. Uh.
With a second?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we have a motion, a second, yeah.
It was a further specifics and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion, questions?
A second.
Yeah.
No? Okay, all those in favor of approving first reading? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, collaborative for educational services update.
We have no update.
Okay, very good. We'll probably ask you at the beginning of May anyway.
You will.
You can tell us that again? All right, thank you very much. Um, and next we have our student representative update by Alexis White.
Hi, um, I know that there's still the international trips that were very successful over April vacation, like to France. There's one still going on, actually. The exchange is still happening, cause that was like the two-week French exchange. Um, I went to Costa Rica. That was amazing. Um, I really learned a lot, a lot about other cultures and other people and other ways of life. It was just such like an enriching experience. I really, really enjoyed it. Um, I know that softball and baseball have started up for this season and a few games have been rained out, but seems to be going okay from what I hear. Um, there was also, there's still a canned food drive going on and then I believe there was a, um, for Stop Hunger Now, we had filling of the rice containers that can feed six people. Uh, that went on over vacation too. I believe it was that Saturday. Um, I believe that's all right now. Um, I know there's the play coming up that I'm, I'm in, uh, and then there were none. That's gonna be the nineteenth through twenty-second. And people should go to that, cause it's really fun.
What's the name of it again, Alexis?
And Then There Were None, based on Agatha Christie's book. It's a murder mystery. It's.
Ooh, cool. When is that?
Uh, the nineteenth through the twenty-second of May. Yes.
And isn't Distinguished.
Distinguished Young Women. Yes, happening this Sunday, May first. Yep.
Right. Right.
And that's at what time? Do you know?
I do not know.
Hmm, sorry, don't know. Probably one o'clock, but not entirely sure. Okay, yeah, we have a lot, a lot of, um, young women participating. I think there's twenty-two this year.
Twenty-two.
And a lot from East Hampton High.
Yeah, I think it's like very even between East Hampton and Hampshire. There's a lot of girls.
That's a lot.
Yeah. It's great.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, AP exams are coming up these next two weeks and finals for the seniors are right after that, so it's a lot going on this month. It's good.
Good. And the prom?
Prom, yep, next week, Friday.
Prom's coming up.
Very exciting. And that will be at?
That'll be at Che Joseph, Che, Che Josephs at six.
Nice.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, we need to appoint a health and safety committee and I wanted to share some background information on that. Um, an air quality report was done on Whitebrook Middle School and a report has been sent to the district. And our contract with the union membership calls for a district-wide health and safety committee to be established to review health and safety-related information such as this. So the contract specifically states that we will establish a committee consisting of two members appointed by the school committee and two members chosen by the association. And these members will chose, choose a fifth committee member acceptable to all of them. That, that will be the, the makeup of the health and safety committee. Once the committee is established, a copy of the report will be given to them and to the school committee. And tonight, we need to decide who we would like to appoint to this committee. Um, I'd like to suggest to the, uh, committee that we might wanna consider, um, nominating Dale Doran, our director of business services, and Peter Roy, our director of maintenance, um, simply because both individuals are currently responsible for health and safety matters in our district. So I just wanted to put that nomination out there and open it up to comments.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. You all are in supportive of that idea?
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
Support of that idea. Okay, any other comments, questions? No? Very good. Do we wanna have a motion to appoint those individuals?
Motion to appoint?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, one other thing that I want to, um, well, uh, we'll wait till matters for action. Okay, we'll move on now to the.
Yeah, actually, I, I just wanted, if I could, under, I'd never know whether the appropriate point is public speak or other, but I just wanted to thank a member and of the East Hampton School Committee on behalf of the students, um, in the AP US Government course at Williston that I teach. We wanted to thank Kelly Brown, um, of East Hampton High School for her extraordinary voluntary service in helping us prepare to go to Washington this past weekend to represent the Commonwealth. Um, some of you may know that Kelly and I work together, um, in many ways and, um, my students did not know the extent of it until this past six weeks when Kelly made a, a number of visits to the school and also communicated with the students electronically and did a terrific job in, in helping them, um, be much better prepared uh, for the national finals. And again, I just, I wanted to sing her praises publicly and thank her on behalf of the students. So we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, so the first item on the report is the Student Advisory Committee Discussion and, um, uh, Deb, I think you have that document. There, there is, um, some, um, state law.
Yes.
Mass General Law that defines, um, the, uh, Student Advisory Committee. Certainly, and I did, uh, forward it to you, uh, school committee members. So the, um, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-eight M says, "School committees of cities, towns, and regional school districts shall meet at least once every other month. During the month, um, schools in session with a student advisory committee consist of five members to be composed of students selected by the student body of the high school or high schools in each city, town, or regional school district. The members of such student advisory committees shall by majority vote prior to the first day of June in each year select, elect from their number a chairperson who shall serve for a term of one year. Said chairperson shall be an ex officio, non-voting member of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions unless such right is expressly granted by the individual school committee. Said chairperson shall be subject to all school committee rules and regulations and shall serve without compensation." Um, in our district, what we have historically done is, um, had the, uh, student council be our student advisory council. And the student council president is the chairperson who attends our school committee meetings. Um, and therefore we have Alexis. So there was some discussion about that, um, before about, you know, how this, the, how the, the, um, student was chosen to, uh, be on the school committee and this, um, Mass General Law, um, spells that out. Um, and I think the other thing that we were talking about is, um, if Alexis is not able to attend, you know, can we have someone else attend? So I think maybe that was a discussion that you as school committee members wanted to have and, and with Alexis here, that's probably a, a good idea.
Yes.
So Alexis, have you had any thoughts about that?
I definitely would have, um, loved to have somebody else be able to go when I was not able to, but because of some like, it's hard to like find somebody who's also super reliable and can like fill in last minute. So it was kind of a hard issue to like bring up and make sure that that person can also do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but it would definitely be bene- beneficial, yes.
Alexis, there is typically a vice chair of the student council, is that correct?
Yep.
Do you think that that could be maybe written into the job description of the vice chair? That if, if the chairperson can't make it at any given week, that the vice chair would need to spin?
Yeah.
Do you think that would make sense?
I think so. Definitely, yeah. I was thinking during like, um, my vice is Nikki Page and I know she, like, we both work a lot and so that has some issues. And then, um, I feel like making it somebody else with their own responsibilities to like fill in might be easier, but I do like the idea of maybe pitching that as like the vice president's, um, responsibilities also.
To fill in when the chairperson can't make it.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, as I know you'll probably have elections coming up for the fall.
Yeah, I would definitely pitch it more.
Yeah, maybe you could, um, just share that information, put it in the forefront so that people could maybe decide to run or not run based on their availability for Tuesday nights, yeah?
Yeah, I know that it wasn't pitched to me like that. Um, the last president didn't actually tell me about this. I learned it from Mr. McGuire after and so I definitely wanna make sure that that is a point that everybody knows that this position means coming to the student coun, student committee, school committee meetings. And then adding the vice responsibility, responsibility to.
That'd be great, definitely. Yeah, if you can add that to the job descriptions for the upcoming elections.
Yes, definitely be that.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, I apologize. I realize that the train seems to have left the station on this. Maybe I misunderstood something that you said.
Go for it.
In the, in that, I thought I understood you to say that the current vice president
Yes, yes.
faces some of the same scheduling challenges that you do.
Yes.
And that you therefore thought that it, that another.
Yeah.
Possible person is also worthy of consideration.
Maybe like an underclassman who doesn't have as much like work and, uh, different scheduling conflicts or like a junior or sophomore, maybe. Um, I know seniors are just very busy and they end up being the vice presidents normally, cause you have like all seniors or like upperclassmen. Um, it's always just one idea.
Right, and, and I think it's just an alternative idea to having it be the vice president is that, um, and I know there's discretion every year. I wonder if it would work to combine the ideas, which is to say to the student council, when you convene after the election, looking forward to next year and looking forward to all of your schedules, if we were to authorize you choosing the alternate from that group, rather than prescribing for you that it must be the vice president.
Right.
Just as an alternative idea to consider, that if we were to entrust the student council with saying, is there someone else among your membership for whom this could be a real priority? That it would really fit in their set of responsibilities, that we allow them that flexibility? Is that?
Well, the only thing, I, I don't know. The only thing is that state law states that the members of such student advisory committees shall by majority vote prior to the first day of June in each year, elect from their number a chairperson who will serve a term of one year. Said chairperson shall be an ex officio, non-voting member of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions, blah, 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 blah. Said chairperson shall be subject to all school committee rules and regulations and shall serve without compensation. So it specifically states in the state law that it's supposed to be the chairperson of the student advisory group or student council group. We kind of call it student council group.
Right.
Um, so it says by state law, it should be the chairperson. And I thought typically a vice chair's responsibilities are to step in when the chair is not able to fulfill their, their commitment.
Yeah.
So I, that's why I thought that would be an acceptable, you know, have a, a backup plan. But I don't know about having a separate person elected just for that.
No, I'm saying from within the, the committee, right, and in terms of the language, right, the language says.
Within the student body, you mean, Peter?
Within, uh, right, I, I was looking at the language at the same time you were, Deb, and I, and I understood it to say, right, that there is this committee, which is our student council. So I'm saying anyone on the student council
Could be voted in.
could be voted in by the student council to be the alternate to what the state, the state law.
Oh, to be the alternate.
It seems to me that we, uh, down in the strict interpretation of the state law, we can't say the vice president either.
Right.
I, I, I'm simply saying, if we're willing to go that far, why not let the student council have the flexibility to say that another member of the student council, other than the vice president,
Oh.
that, that the default position would be the vice president. But if the vice president presented what Alexis just described, that the student council could then say, we choose, uh,
That person to be the backup person.
another person to be, to be the alternate.
I see. Okay.
Just, just, just to give the students a little bit more flexibility in the event that we face the circumstances that Alexis described as existing right now.
I see. Okay, I thought you meant as the primary person, but you're saying as a backup.
No, right, as a, as a backup.
Do you wanna take this back and have a conversation with the?
I can really talk, talk to Mr. McGuire and then the whole student body, student council. Um, I'll definitely bring it up. We have a meeting Thursday, so I can do it then.
Perfect time. Thanks for that, Alexis.
Okay. And, and, and to your point, Deb, I had in a previous meeting suggested that, but when I saw this piece.
Mm-hmm, it doesn't, it doesn't make it in.
It doesn't allow for a separate freestanding person. So I understand that confusion is.
Mm-hmm, right, right, right.
That in the previous meeting, I had wondered if that was an option.
Right.
I understood the information that we got from the superintendent to say, that's not.
Right.
And so I was picking up off of what Alexis said here.
It doesn't cover it at all.
Okay.
Sounds like we have a good solution. Thank you, Alexis.
Alexis, do you wanna take this copy of the?
Yeah.
Have a copy with you so you can share that with Mr. Burke and have that conversation.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, oh, I'm sorry, it's your report, I'm sorry.
One other, uh, quick thing. I just wanted to update the committee on, um, a, uh, program that I've just learned about uh, called Project Safe Childhood. Um, I learned of this program from Captain Alberti of the Police Department. Um, I'd been working with Officer Shadle about trying to bring in, um, a training and a, a program for parents on internet safety. And Officer Shadle, um, had gotten an email from Captain Alberti, who, um, put me in touch with, uh, Karen Legacy of the United States Attorney's Office Springfield Branch, who is the person who puts on these programs called Project Safe Childhood, free to all districts. Um, it's a Department of Justice initiative to combat the proliferation of technology facilitated crimes involving the exploitation of children. Um, the program she's suggesting for our district would involve two presentations, one for middle school and one for high school. And, uh, in, in addition, a, a parent, uh, presentation in the evening in which she said she typically likes to do is to have the presentation for the students during the day and the presentation for the parents in the evening so that the students and their parents can discuss, you know, what they learned in, in these presentations. Uh, the same program is being presented in a number of districts, including North Hampton. Believe they're having a presentation in the very near future. The next step for us is to determine a good date for this presentation, either this spring or next fall. Um, she is available in the spring. Um, I will be, um, meeting with my administrators to discuss the program and to determine, uh, the most appropriate time to have this program in our district. I think it's very worthwhile. It comes highly recommended by the Police Department and, um, and by the, um, the, uh, US Department of Justice. And so we're, um, very much looking forward to having this, uh, in place in our district. And she is saying that she will come and she will do, uh, four hundred students at, uh, at, at, at both of our schools, you know, in a day, and they do them in small groups so that, uh, it's a, a very nice training.
I definitely wanted to know that. Sounds really interesting.
Yeah, so we'll let you know when we get this, the dates for this.
And, and I know that the Northwest District Attorney's Office, David Sullivan's office, also does work in this area too. And I, I, I remember being stunned by the presentation that they made with the ease with which, um, the facility with which people can go through.
And I, I, I remember being stunned by the presentation that they made with the ease with which, um, the facility with which people can go through what many young people think of as quite solid firewalls on their, on their, uh, you know, their online presence.
Yeah.
Um, with the real emphasis being on the first three letters. It's worldwide.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and not so safe, as, as many students would like to believe.
And my. Yeah, and my.
And that, that facilitates the kind of con- concerns that this sounds like it would address. And so I, I second it because it was, it was stunning how fast this person as an adult was able to show, this is how we get around this firewall, this is how we get around this one, and suddenly we're looking at, you know, photographs or something that a, a student would, a young person would post thinking that they were safe and secure and not, and then being used.
Yeah.
It sounds like a great problem.
And my understanding is it's a very eye-opening presentation and very worthwhile for our parents and for our students.
Important information. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm really glad that it's also offered, uh, at Whitebrook.
Yes, yes, important.
You know, I was gonna ask you what grade levels, so that's, that's great.
Yeah.
Very important. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have, uh, school choice openings listed and we, at this point in time, still don't have our firm numbers. So we're gonna be moving that to our, the agenda for our next meeting. So we don't have those numbers quite finished yet. Um, we need to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Motion to approve the minutes, sorry.
What?
I can.
Are you? Motion to approve the minutes from, um, the regular session on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Seven. Is the motion approved to, a motion to approve the minutes and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, we have warrants and payroll.
For payroll, I move to approve the school payroll dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and it's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
For accounts payable, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of one hundred four thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
There's been a motion and it's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of one hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I did.
Thank you very much. Is there any other?
That's it.
Payroll details, okay. That's it, okay. Um, next we have two out-of-state field trip requests. One.
Motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to, um, approve the trip request by Kelly Brown to the Mashentucket Pequot Museum.
Second. Second. There's a motion to approve the field trip to the Mashentucket, Mashentucket, Connecticut. Uh, what was it? Um.
Mashentucket Pequot Museum.
Museum? Museum, okay, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a terrific resource.
Good. Glad our students have that opportunity. There's also, um, field trip request for East Hampton High School students to go to the Museum of Art, Modern Museum of Art.
Do we have a hard copy of that? Did I miss it?
I don't.
I think it's here.
I think you do.
I, I missed it in my paperwork. I apologize. I.
It's in the, um.
It's on the amended section, the last page of the amended section.
Amended, uh.
Oh, 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 it's attached to the, um, reports from the guidance department.
Oh, it's their last page.
I didn't have the.
Oh, got it. I looked at the first one and saw Kelly's and didn't see, got it. Thank you, my apologies. I was looking online.
On the other.
Museum of Modern Art in New York City.
Right. Thank you.
From Brian Brown, Eileen Clavell.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the field trip to the Museum of Modern Art in New York City and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Before we, um, move to adjourn, I just wanna add one other, um, item. I just wanna mention one other item, um, and that is that the school building committee needs to establish, um, a designer selection panel. So a group of three people that will be charged with, um, participating in Boston with the NSBA uh, in the process of selecting the designer for our possible new school building in East Hampton. K through eight potentially, uh, building in East Hampton. Um, so the school committee is charged with establishing that panel and one of the three members needs to be the mayor or his or her designee. One is also the superintendent or his or her designee and the school committee needs to establish, um, a third person for that panel. Now, we can't actually do that and vote on that at this meeting because it's not on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. Mm.
However, a decision needs to be made before the next school building committee meeting, which is next week.
Mm.
So what I wanted to ask all of you is if you would allow me to, um, make that selection on your behalf, if you would grant me permission to do that, that would be one way that we could have the, uh, s- committee established in time for the school building committee meeting legally. So I wanted to ask your permission to make that selection on your behalf.
So, just to clarify, we can't vote on the person, but we can vote to let you choose the person.
I think it's, it's not a vote. It's just to agree that you would, um, allow her to, or delegate her to make this appointee for the school committee.
And it's a vote.
So the mayor has, um, the mayor or the designee, uh, is one, we have three members that go to the, uh, school building committee meeting in Boston. They have six members for this de- uh, design selection team. So one of, a- and they dictate that one has to be the mayor or the mayor's designee, one has to be the superintendent, superintendent's designee and one has to be, uh, someone designated by the, uh, school committee. I believe it's a school committee member. Am I correct? Karen is a school committee member, right? So since we didn't get it on the agenda, we just learned about this and we don't have another school committee meeting until after, um, May fifth, which is when we have to have this information to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, we do have a, a school building committee meeting on Tuesday. So we were going to, you know, put, uh, put forth our selection committee as of Tuesday, but we, what we need is the school committee's, um, member. And so since we can't vote, we were ju- going to suggest that, uh, your chair be allowed to, uh, select an appointee to the, uh, to the committee.
I, I think I understand the proposal. I don't understand the difference in one case voting and in another case not voting. And, and I, I don't think that we're gonna get in a whole lot of trouble. Um, I understand why you're saying that because it wasn't on the agenda, we can't vote on it. It just seems odd to, to show such great fidelity to that rule and then to very publicly do something else right afterwards. Uh, you know, if it's that important to show the fidelity to it, I would suggest that we call a meeting before this, this happens.
An emergency meeting?
Yeah, it just seems odd to me.
No, you can certainly do that.
To do that. I would, I would recommend to the school committee, eh, from my perspective, that it would be preferable, given what we've said so far, for us to actually have a meeting in time to consider and duly vote on this, this person, even though it will effectively be the same thing. Otherwise, I would suggest that we go ahead and vote tonight and live with the consequences.
So perhaps after this meeting, we could come up with a date that we could get a quorum for that vote?
Okay.
Before our deadline.
And the deadline's May fifth, uh?
When is the?
Uh, May fifth, yes.
Okay. We need that.
If that's the preference, we can do that.
And then we, we just need the forty-eight hours to post it.
Is that the preference?
Right.
Oh, yes, we have that forty-eight hours.
We need, we need, we need forty-eight hours.
The forty-eight hours, as long as we have the forty-eight hours and post the, the meeting and that would be the agenda item.
So we need. Right.
Okay. If that's what, what you'd like to do, we'll do that.
Well, that's just, I just made the proposal. I don't know what the sense of the rest of the, the group is.
Any other comments or?
I make it as a motion.
Discussion?
I'm more, I'm more than willing to be available for, um, what we would call an, a, well, an emergency meeting or one, you know, or one, um,
Emergency meeting. Right.
One agenda item meeting.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments, suggestions? Objections?
I don't have a, a preference either way. I mean, I would be comfortable with either decision, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay.
I know that's not helpful.
Yeah, helpful. Yeah.
All right, very good. We will do that. We will, uh, discuss a meeting date after the meeting is adjourned, I guess. Okay, so.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Oops, I'm sorry.
That, that's just what I was asking for. Thank you. Thank you. Um, uh, motion's been made to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.